So I'm gonna call the meeting to order Monday, July 8th at 6:04. And any from select board members, any adjustments to the select board agenda? Sounds like Diana might have one or two.
Where's my agenda?
This?
I'm deciding.
Okay.
Oh, we have the library trustee thing.
Okay.
That came from Steve. I thought he was gonna be here.
Library trustee, and is that okay to do it in updates and other business down at the bottom?
Well, then he'd have to stay here for the whole meeting, but if he's not here, yeah, I guess.
Okay.
That's.
All right. If not, we'll put it there. Otherwise, we'll sneak it in someplace.
I might have an adjustment, but that depends. Robin, when you do the town clerk's report, were you gonna talk about the phone call that you received about the possibly dangerous person in West Woodbury? Is that gonna be part of your report?
I can space that out.
Oh, okay. Because if you're gonna.
I'm busy.
I know.
Here's it. Oh, here's Steve.
If you're gonna talk about it, I won't try to add it, but if you weren't gonna mention it, I feel like we should at least touch upon it.
You actually talked to the people up there, right?
I did talk to them. I talked to Hardwick PD, so I have a little bit of information, not.
We also have it on under executive session.
Right.
Anything that you don't want to talk about in public.
I mean, I feel like it's a public issue, so.
Okay, fine.
Feel like whatever we know should be shared.
So I did notice that. Welcome, Steve.
Hello.
He, Steve did show up, so maybe we could do that a little bit earlier, maybe after our interview with Mr. Dumas.
Sure.
Okay, we'll throw Steve in there. Any other adjustments? All right. Hearing none, can move on. We all got a copy of the minutes. The next item to approve the minutes, is there a motion from one of the board members?
Did you get my email earlier today where I?
I mean, sure I did. I haven't read it, had a chance to read it yet.
Okay. Lizzie suggested beefing up the discussion about the signs a little bit, so I did that.
I did see that. Okay. So I should review that quickly before.
Was that the only change, Diana?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, there was one thing I didn't have. I didn't have the full number skipped for that 17,000 and something from FEMA for a mitigation project.
For COVID?
Yeah. So I just put 17,000.
Plus or minus, yeah.
That's all right.
I didn't have the last three numbers.
That's all right. It's just a, it's just an estimate anyway.
What?
It's just an estimate anyway.
Oh, okay, okay.
17,000 is close enough.
You wanna make a motion to approve?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, there's a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Minutes are approved from June 24th, 2024.
Are they signing?
Yeah, I forgot we signed. Yeah.
They sign more than one?
Hmm.
I guess we only need to sign one.
Oh, no, you, yeah, okay.
Sign them all?
No, just have to sign one.
Yeah.
This, this extra one is just Lizzie's.
Thank you. I'll keep this one now.
No.
No?
Keep this one because this one says extra on it.
But this is the one. Okay, then I'll sign this one. Oh, you would sign this one.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right.
Steve, so you're on the agenda, but is there any other public comment from anybody other than folks that are on the agenda? Seville? No. All right. All right, seeing that there's no other public here that wanna make a comment, we'll move on to Mr. Fix. Hardwick Gazette.
Thank you all for putting me on the agenda. I think the, well, first of all, thank you to the Woodbury Fund for sending us funding to help with bringing on community paid journalists and helping fund an additional workstation, a part of an additional workstation we need to do.
No, you're welcome, but that really doesn't have anything to do with us.
No.
It's part of record now. That's true.
But Robblyck is listening, so it's all right. And you have something to do with appointing.
That's true, yeah.
Anyway, for the eyesight, white stripe. But also, as the Gazette returns from its sleepy self to being more involved, we're trying to work with, understand what towns are doing with public notices. And I came upon a notice in the Calendary Record that did not appear to be an advertisement, and I couldn't find it on the website, so I called Robin to find out how Calendary Record would have gotten. Apparently, it was.
Didn't put anything in Calendary Record. Times Argus we did.
Maybe it was the Times Argus.
We did before. We have used it before.
Yeah, let me talk about.
No, I said Calendary Record. It's a Times Argus.
Okay.
And so that's really what started the conversation. And I think, you know, given what I heard from Robin and our exchanges, Diana, I guess my question is, you know, over the course of the next year, we hope to find funding, and it's kind of a chicken and egg thing. If we were still in print, we probably have a better chance of regaining that lost local advantage. So the challenge is funding the first six months of print to regain that. And so I think at this point, my question to the select board is, would you be able to share with us, and it doesn't have to be public, though it's probably on your budget somewhere, what you're paying now for ads that potentially the Gazette could regain if we went to print and became your paper record for public notices? Because that would help us estimate what our funding.
Well, it's hard. You know, how far we go with our ads really depends on what we're looking for. You know, if we're looking for a road crew member, we'll probably go to the Calendary Record and the News and Citizen and the Times Argus. But as far as an official notice like zoning board notice that has to be published, those, we'll sometimes do both, but we have to do the Times Argus. That's what I was told by VLCT last year, that it has to have a, be a newspaper that's in print, in general circulation in the area, although, you know, yeah, that's a question.
Until July 1st, you were allowed to put public notices in digital publications under the pandemic, under the state.
Oh, okay.
But VLCT, who is a private organization, not a public organization, has their reasons for doing what they do. But at this point, it does have to be a print publication with wide circulation.
But if it's something that we, you know, that we wanna share, we wanna get input from people, we go to the Gazette, too.
Yep. So just to start the conversation, we can.
Is that a budget number, Diana? Do you know that we?
Advertising, advertising, there is, this will be yours, 500.
500.
That's it?
Yep.
It was 700.
And that would include both the jobs, you know, the wanted ads as well as public notices.
Yes.
Yeah.
No, I lied. So we have also the highway, a separate budget for advertising. So the one I need to do was for the general fund. As far as hiring, if we got, I'll send a little here.
That's.
Page. Highway, 500, 400.
And, and.
Yeah.
I didn't find it on the app, but.
Thank you.
I've never sent to the magnitude of it. That's, that's something. How should I hear that? Get you up?
Oh, no, no, no. As far as, most of the fuel line going on for fuel bids, but yeah. So there's regular things that we advertise for.
Yeah, when we go off the biz, we send them to wherever we think we might get some response from.
Yep.
Thank you for all your work in reviving the Gazette.
Thank you.
To its service.
Let's. I'm spending as much time finding funding and keep it alive. I need to wait to make it. It's not a sustainable operation. And I also wanted to be here just to see how your select board meetings know, we do have an intern named Ramona Parkin, who will probably be coming regularly. I'll send you a note.
Thank you. Steve?
May I ask a question of our guest?
Of course. And I defer to the board.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, how do you, how do you foresee local paper in this day and age reinventing itself? Gazette, for example, in print publication and into digital, hopefully coming back? What means, by what means can local community paper like that make it these days?
Well, local community papers are making it. Department of Commerce continues to publish. They, they took advantage of pandemic funds and used it to keep funding what they were doing. The Hardwick Gazette chose to stop doing that, which meant we lost the network of 50 local outlets. We lost the printer contract we had. We lost the mailing contract we had. The News and Citizen does it at no charge. Sends out, there you go. And we don't do the News and Citizen in Woodbury.
We don't.
But they're now, they expand during the pandemic into Hart River, Old River, then East Hardwick, Statchbury, River. We see it being a combination of grant funded, philanthropic, both corporate and, and other organizations. Advertising can be a big part of it. And I think we could talk about advertising in a digital, print advertising in a digital age, but what print does, that digital does, is sit on your coffee table and sit, I mean, we print 10 copies now. It's amazing, the comments we get from the copy that's at the front seat coffee or Mickey the Barber or the village.
Really?
Or the libraries. And I'd love to figure out a way to get it down to Woodbury's library as well. So, and it's a matter of being local, I think. There's nobody else who's gonna sit here and hear a Woodbury select board meeting and write about what your road crew worked. Last week, we put a picture of your new fire station paper. Is it valuable today? Maybe, maybe not. A dry body sees it. But somebody who's not in Woodbury, who's a summer person in Woodbury, in the winter sees what's going on. 50 years from now, someone will have a way to find out what happened historically in Woodbury and the Times Argus and Calendary Record and the Burlington Free Press. So DD digger might be lookable. But we hope that we can connect with people in the town to make it important. So that's, that's how we expect it.
I wish you luck.
Something that needs to matter, clippings on the refrigerator. As long as we all eat refrigerated foods, there'll be a place in our refrigerator to play with clippings from the paper.
That's good. We should show up at the farmer market with refrigerator.
Right. For a small, for a small price.
Yeah. And especially now that you're distributing it for free.
Well, that's what we say. Hardwick Gazette is free to read, not free to breathe. And we hope that that will connect with people thinking maybe my checklist would be useful to them.
So if you go back to a paper version, is it still gonna be free?
Consultants have a varied outlook on that. I think we can do it by needing it to be free. And I think it's important because there are people who need it to see job ads, who can't afford to pay $50 or $60 a year. And, which is what would cost us at least to, and so, but if one person pays 100, then it pays for another person. If two people pay for 100, it pays for another two people to get, or to not pay for it. And I think local lose is grateful. They really is grateful to know what our families, what our parents, and the two things that get erased by this are obituaries and police reports. And once people get in for that, they wanna know what they're able to do. And so another thing we're, the idea we're actually, first of all, we're getting ready to do something together with HCTV, bringing in all the candidates to do both an interview in print for the Gazette and a televised version that are cross linked to each other. And anyway, so there, you know, there are things we're trying to do to expand beyond just straight print and work with other media.
One more suggestion. I did this a good one. I don't know if you've considered it, but towns customarily have on their annual town meeting agenda items for social services. I don't know if a local paper would qualify, but it's.
Yes, you mean for the, for the appropriation?
Yes.
We've, we've thought about that. We're not sure. Yeah, how that will work.
I mean, you are a non-profit now, right? Or are you?
We, we have official sponsorship. I have a letter from IRS asking for another piece of paper, I think, very quickly. We're, our intent is to.
We give money to HCTV. So, yeah, I mean, that's worth it.
You know, a token, I think anything we would ask for would be a token to show to funders that we have support of. So, yeah, maybe a few hundred dollars would, would serve us in that regard. Yeah, thanks for asking. Good question.
Thanks for doing it.
Thanks for doing it. Appreciate it.
Mr. Dumas, Dumas?
Dumas.
Nice to meet you. Yeah, thanks for coming. So the next item on the agenda is animal control officer. And I understand you've already taken care of a few things on Woodbury's behalf. No?
No, that was the other guy.
No.
You wanna go up here so we can talk?
Sure.
So, yeah, Dever's here, who I called on because I had read his something on Facebook or something, that he was doing animal control officer for several area towns.
Yeah.
And I asked him if he'd think of adding us to his list. And I never heard back from him, but he did talk to you. So there we are.
He wants to cut down on selling them, so.
Yeah.
He asked me if I could help.
Yeah. And is something that you think you might like to do?
I help him out once in a while here and there, so.
What kind of calls does he respond to?
Just noise, like.
Noise, yeah.
And stuff like that. Nothing major.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, had you thought about how we might pay you, like per call? Or we were giving Kim Silk like $500 a year because when we were paying him, by the hour, he wasn't charging us. So.
Yeah.
So we needed at least $500. But we think.
That'd work.
You have any, any questions for Mr. Dumas?
Sure. So like when you've responded to barking complaints, I'm assuming that's what you mean, noise complaints, barking dogs?
Yeah.
Um, how do you handle those situations?
Just ask politely, talk to them calmly, just ask them to keep it down. Hopefully it stops, but second times, a little more stern.
I was gonna, I thought I had an example for you, because we've had a dog over this way about a mile, who goes about two miles to South Woodbury, where there are dogs that are not spayed, female dogs. And this male was, has been causing problems in a couple of different places. One is where they have, they breed dogs, so they have females that are in heat sometimes. And so I was gonna suggest to ask how you would deal with that, but then Chris told me that that guy's had his dogs paid or fixed in the meantime. And, but how would you do, deal with that? Just go to him and?
Just go or hook it up or put it in the kennel, make sure they keep track of it.
Yeah, it's not illegal to have your dog, not sick, but it is legal to be a nuisance. This is a copy of our current animal control ordinance that you can handle. We have one that is in the process of being adopted, but in the meantime, that's what we've got.
So in terms of like aggressive animals or violent animals, what, how do you guys, you and Mr. Mercer, is it? How do you deal with those situations?
Oh, usually get a hold of an officer, bite somebody or stuff like that.
Get a hold of what?
The police department.
Oh, yeah.
And see how they wanna perceive what they did.
We don't have that, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, that's what you would do in our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Aggressive dogs.
So can I give you a list of the dogs that they have registered or licensed for the town?
We can get access.
What is easier for you? It's by the person's name? It's by the tag number? Or?
Both.
Okay.
I have another question. So this is an issue that I do think we're facing in a town right now, so I'm curious how you'd handle it. There are a few dogs that have been reported to be aggressive, but to my knowledge, they haven't actually bitten anybody yet. So I imagine you probably can't call the police. What would, do you have thoughts on how you'd handle that?
It depends how aggressive.
Okay.
Like lungey people and stuff like that, you'd have to have record of it. And then if it happens three times, then you'd have to go a different way.
Okay. And what would that different way be?
The, go through the police department and court systems, have the dog put down and bite you and stuff like that.
Okay. Are they usually pretty responsive when you do try to get a police officer involved?
Yeah. You call the courts and they're usually real responsive, especially if it's a child or something.
We have had one situation a few years ago where our animal control officer had to call in the sheriff's department. I think it was the sheriff. I don't think it was the state police, but they did come and help him with a case of having to take a dog.
You have to have it with you in order to see.
Yeah, we do have a contract with the Washington County Sheriff's.
Okay.
So these aggressive dogs that you're talking about, are they like chasing people on bikes or something, or?
Um, not on bikes, that I've heard specifically. These are dogs that have, it's been brought up before. There's dogs up towards Old Corryway. There's the dog in West Woodbury.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Ones that we've talked about, but there hasn't really been any solution.
Mostly chasing cars?
Chasing cars, but I also think acting, I think people are no longer walking in certain areas because they're afraid of some of the dogs.
Yeah.
Second, that's secondhand information, not firsthand.
Anyone else have any questions? Or Ed?
And Kim's still on to be the porter or not?
Oh, yes, he is. He did stay. Kim Silk has a kennel. He doesn't use it anymore as a commercial kennel, but he has one. And if he's willing to work with whoever, if you need to take a dog and have it kennelled for, I don't know how long it is, before you can take it to the Humane Society, but.
Think it's seven days.
Yeah.
It was ten, but I think it's seven.
Yeah. So he's still willing to do that, as far as I know.
Great. So what would be our next steps? Could we?
Well, we can either talk about it later in our executive session, or we can just do something now.
If the cost of the town is the same as it's been, I would be in favor of appointing you, if you're willing. And we appreciate it.
That would be a motion?
Sounds like a motion.
Unless you guys wanna talk about it, I'll make a motion. Yeah.
So there's a motion on the table to approve Mr. Dumas as the animal control officer for the town of Woodbury. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Alfie?
So are we writing that to the stipends?
What?
Are we writing that to the stipend?
Well, if he works for, you know, if he works hard enough, he won't get it until next year. So, end of the year probably, but yeah, that makes sense. Do you think the stipend as opposed to?
Alfie, I have just a quick question.
Yeah, just a quick, I'm wondering if this position would also handle large animals?
No.
Like horses or cows or?
We have not passed the large animal ordinance yet, and I have a feeling it's doubtful that we will. And if we did, it might make it even harder to find somebody to do the job. I don't know.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
That's not saying you won't get a call. You still.
Yeah.
Who's that or something?
People call the office, they call the office and say, who's your animal control officer? We give you your name and number, then you're stuck. I mean, then you get the calls. Okay, yeah.
Who's, whatever.
Any further discussion?
Uh, just to clarify the stipend. So it'll be a fixed stipend of $500 per year?
That's acceptable?
Yeah.
Steve?
I think for the board, we should have a second on the motion. I didn't hear.
I think we're small board.
Oh, see.
Small board rules.
Small board rules. Thank you.
All those in favor? Please say aye.
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 Motion passes.
Thank you, Ed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Nice to have that role filled.
According to.
Yeah.
See.
Just, and then you can either mail it or you mail it, send it, mail it back to me that we all.
I know you've got your number, but you probably should give it to Robin.
Yes.
I've got your number, I mean.
Is that it?
Hand my home.
So you work during the day?
Okay. And the list of the animals?
Yeah.
Do you wanna stop by the office and pick them up or not?
Where? Outback here?
Nope, it's down the road about a mile. It's out of your new or roster hill road is?
Yeah.
And we're right across the.
Okay, yeah.
And we're open to take them in six until late.
Oh.
If that helps.
Yeah, I would. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, we stuck in as an amendment to the agenda to discuss the library trustee situation. I have to be honest, I just saw the title, read the subject of the emails, but didn't open it yet, so.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here. I'm here to inform you that on June 20th, one of our trustees, Chris Codius, resigned. So it leaves one vacancy on our five-member board. And I'm here to request, as we've done in the past, that you designate the board of trustees to solicit applications for an appointment to the board. I think it's worked well in the past, twice to my knowledge, we've been able to fill vacancies. So the process that we've done in the past is that the library board of trustees puts out a public notice requesting inquiries, letters of interest, resumes and so forth, answer any questions that applicants might have, and then we refer them to the select board for an appointment. And that appointment is only good through the next election, which would be the town meeting.
When you do those notices, you, does it cost anything?
No.
You just do front porch forum?
We've had good success over the years, putting them front porch forum, put a post on our library website, and then also on our Facebook page. And we ask Gary Parker on his Facebook page. And that usually gives us pretty good coverage. And we've filled the vacancies we've had for that, yeah. And then there's, there is a public notice that the select board. And then there's, there is a public notice that the select board has required to post, and I'm sorry that I should have notified you within 10 days. So I drafted a public notice that I'd be happy to post them, and it says on the notice, I included it in the body of the email, but, "Due to a delay in notification by the chair of the library board of trustees," that's me, "this notice is being published later than 10 days within creation of vacancy." So, um, these notices are supposed to go up in the event of a vacancy on any public, public board or committee. Just to let the public know that there's a different means to fill the position, not only by appointing a select board, but it could also be by special election, special means, so, there you go.
Isn't it a special town, meaning to elect a library trustee? We need that kind of thing around here.
So, do you have any questions?
Is that something for us to sign?
This is, this is nearly identical to the-
Thank you.
To the other draft of the notice that I made for the last vacancy. The only, the only difference here is that the dates are updated and the explanation for the delay in posting.
So those three are the post office, the town office, and the board out here?
You got, yep.
So hopefully, hopefully, when you're calling.
Let me mail out the post office, but under the statute, it says it needs to be posted at the town office office and two other offices.
So you lay the signpost office, and then you're not getting the glass, taking care of that.
Yep, and-
It doesn't have to be under the glass, don't they?
Well, that would windowsill look if we don't want it.
Nobody hooks that under the glass.
I thought you were making some right feet arrows.
And post, post went to the library, that's acceptable.
If there's no objection from the board, Mr. Fix had a comment or question.
I have one quick question, not being familiar with the town, and not having access to the town, to the website. What's your lead?
My apologies, I should have made that clear.
We gave them back to Steve.
Yes, and the board, here, so I could post it on the website, too.
That'd be great.
Steve, if I send me a notice up to the office, is there an embed to the search? No, what, what we've done in the past is usually leave it out two weeks, it would be, hopefully, we'll have some applicants by the time the next select board meeting, so that would be two weeks. The intention being to fill the vacancy as soon as possible. So, is it contact information? Yes, yes, it will.
I'll try to have that taken tomorrow, if not, it's not going to be today.
You're right here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can make a copy of mine, and put it at the post office. I'll save it here in the post office.
Thank you, well, very good.
Bye.
Take care. And Randy, welcome back, by the way.
Yeah.
So the town treasurers report is the next item on the agenda.
So there's lots of fees. So we'll check on, okay, the line of credit, I have, I have, we're down to almost pinching. So if you look at your financial statements, balance sheet, financial, and then at the last piece, which are due to, where you see the FEMA, and that's not the total abundance for FEMA, because we still have payroll within the high range, that's all, and in the high range. So we have borrowed against all of those. The line of credit, I'm not gonna use or take all 500, I'm gonna do just a little at a time until the tax money starts rolling in, and then, yeah, and how long it takes us to get FEMA money back. So, yes, we have an abundance that's, for FEMA, that's up and over 300,000. And we're still, we still have dogs that we're still fixing, as far as that. But yeah, I, I-
I think we're looking at the last page.
Alfie doesn't have that, so, in here, it's still, Alfie gives me, these voices that are still going to FEMA, whether it's culverts, material, but-
So this 240, 2,000 is what you've borrowed from these other accounts?
No, that's what we expended out of that FEMA. I borrowed more from them than, so if you-
Because what FEMA owes us is more than that, right?
Correct, but I borrowed against the other funds. So I want that replenished, so that I'm not, yeah, hypothetically, the appraisal says they came, they come tomorrow, I don't have that money to pay them, and that's money that is in a fund.
Well, I think it's pretty standard to have to approve the line of credit rate.
What?
This one's where I have to make a motion, and then I need to provide the minutes to the bank.
Are we getting a fixed interest rate, or is it gonna be fluctuating?
What?
The interest rate on the money? We only accrue interest on what we actually use, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What I borrow, yeah.
Yeah.
I've been on the line credit.
What, have they asked you for interest rate?
I haven't sat down with her, she's talking within the fiscal year, so I told her that she needed the minutes first, so once I get a proof, then I can kick in, show it to you guys, this is the bare minimum, she's not, I'm not trying to make some money off.
You're gonna make money off the-
As soon as I get the information I can forward it to you by email, so you guys will know, and I won't sign anything, well, Diana's gotta sign.
So I guess I make a motion that we approve the line of credit limit of $500,000.
Discussion. And Mr. Fix, you had a question or a comment, and as long as the board is okay with-
From a point of view, when you talk about other funds, these are not bank ones, these are town funds.
Correct, correct. I have 18 different funds.
There's no further discussions, no further questions. All those in favor of approving the line of credit from Union Bank, correct? The Union Bank?
Yes.
Yeah, no, that's right, from Union Bank, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, and we can supply these minutes to the loan officer.
Yes. Childcare.
Yeah, what's up with that?
It's mandatory, employees and employers, the minimum that's an employee can take over or get handed is .11. So the town can't take it all over, and we can't take it all over as an employee.
When you say take it over, you mean you collect the money for it from-
Correct, so it's .44 is the total.
Randy, I'm lost.
Yeah.
Sorry, can you start me at the beginning?
The Senate passed a law that everybody, employers and employees, have to pay this contribution quarterly, quarterly. The percentage breakdown is up to the select board, but the minimum that you can put on an employee is .11. The remainder, either the town, well, the town has to eat it, to take on that expense. We didn't budget for it, it's not a huge amount of money, but it's, it's there. So whether the town wants to take the whole .44, you're looking at $44 per thousand.
Then have you come up with any rough estimate of how much, yeah, in a year?
I have not.
I know some towns are just paying the whole thing.
Correct, Greensboro is paying the whole thing, I don't, that's the only one that I've touched recently.
So when you say 44,000 per, or $44 per thousand dollars of income?
Of course.
This is for employee income, so this is coming out, this would theoretically, at least a portion of this comes out of the paycheck, right? So this is a thousand dollars of earned money, 44 needs to go to-
So hypothetically, if I 50,000 I make, um, yeah, the point, well, whatever here, if you wanna do a 22 ratio, either way, yes, a proportion comes out of my pocket, and there's a portion that will come out of the town, regardless, every employee and employer has to pay this now, it's a majority.
Okay, and the 1, .11 is the least-
Correct, that employee would have to pay.
The most the employee will, yeah, okay, sorry.
It's the least, right.
Least we can charge them.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, .44, or, or, we can take .11, or we can take less, we can't take more. We can't divide it up like .22 and .22.
No, if the minimum, the minimum for an employee is .11, you're taking maximum.
So that's not 46,000, that's not 40 something thousand, that's-
So you, okay, so you could ditch it on sale.
No, can't. She said the, for, the .11 is the most you can charge the employee, right?
It's the minimum, sorry, it's the minimum you can charge us. So, no, it's the max, I'm saying, right, it's, I told you, it's the max you'll take out, it's the max.
So the town has to pay at least the .33?
Correct.
And the town could choose to pay the whole thing, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what's the difference between what we're asking, we would be asking them to, you know, how much, if we just took out the whole thing?
Yep.
Is it versus the, if we took out .4 versus .3, do we know how, roughly, how much?
I didn't see that.
Yeah, okay. Is this a decision that we need to make? I mean, I'm inclined to do the whole thing.
You have to, I can't move payroll without just specific-
So you need to know immediately.
This is implemented July, so.
I know I may interrupt you, but this is .44 percent, right?
Right, it's less than 1%.
So 1% of 1,000 is $10. .44 is less than $10 per thousand, I think it's $4.40 per thousand.
In our system, we put it in, well, NIMRA automatically put it into the system as the employee pays the 11, and then the town takes the portion, you know, the revenue, just to set it up in the system. And the way they based it off was $1,000 is 44. Out of $1,000 is $44.
So if that doesn't come up 100%, so who pays the other?
It's the maximum, it's .44. So dividing it up, whether it be 11 on the employee, and then 33 on the town, it equals to 44.
Okay, and then who makes up the difference?
I didn't ask, I don't care. The Senate, the Senate, it's, it's 44.
The rest of us taxpayers, I guess.
And does this go to a common pool? I mean, like, if you have employers that don't have any taxpayer, the-
It doesn't matter, every person-
Okay, so this is the line of some-
Even if you don't have to pay, I have to pay with my quarterly, I also have a state.
Yeah.
This is not, there's no loopholes, you, like, some people don't get it, everybody's getting paid because an employee.
Okay, so it's a state.
Even if you're, you're an owner, your business is, you have a band.
So 10%, so you're talking like, 1/10 of 1% is what we're talking about, whether or not we want the town taxpayers to pay it, or the employees to pay it. So, if I move my decimal points like this, I think it's, if somebody makes $74,000, that would be $74. Am I right? You guys got, Skip's got his calculator out?
So, yeah, I just did a calculation, you can make 50 grand a year, I would come up with $2,200.
No, that can't be-
No, it's all right, I can't agree.
But .11 is a 10, basically, you mean?
Right, are you pointing just that percentage, or are you wanting a whole percentage? The 44? .44.
So I do?
Yeah.
It's not 11%.
It's .44 times 0, .044.
Yes, .0044.
Oh, well, that's-
But, but-
It's not 20.
Yeah, in our system, in the NIMRA, it's just .44. But yes, in the, in the equation of doing the math, it's .0044.
Wait, .044?
Yes, when you're, if you're, if you're just typing it on your-
Okay, it's not .0044.
No, I know .0044.
.044.
No, .04 is 4%. .004 is-
.44.
So that doesn't give you $44 per thousand, though?
Others are, a year, a thousand.
Okay.
The employer rate requires some or all employees to contribute up to 25%, .11% of the contribution through a taxable deduction.
Where'd you see that?
Of the total contribution.
I sent you guys some emails from the webinar that was, as well, passed.
Oh, I missed that one. .44, yeah, okay.
So it's, it's $4.40 per thousand, though, not $44 per thousand?
For them to-
Correct.
I, I'm in favor of the board paying.
Sure, it seems like a pretty small amount.
And you need, we need to make a motion to that effect, is that true?
That sounded like a motion. But I'll make a motion that we, we pay the entire .44%.
.044%. .0044.
Well, ., yeah, .0044, or, yeah, 4/10 of 1%. Oh, my God.
Any further discussion? No further discussion. Any questions? Michael?
Percent of what?
Of their income.
Of their income.
Payroll?
All.
All payroll?
Yeah, all payroll.
Including part-time employees?
Yep, everybody gets a bit.
I'd like to ask what it goes to, but I'll save that question for another day.
There's someone who's trying to, yeah, independent people that need to benefit.
Great.
They're gonna get a bit as well, yeah. Everybody, you have your businesses as well.
But this is, this is all for childcare, the-
Yep, childcare, back, yeah, that passed the Senate and back from the vault last year. So it's now active, hasn't drawn on. So nobody got paid today, and they, until this motion was made, and now they've opted to create an account, a liability account, which I did, but if it's on the town, then that's easy, if there's no breakdown, it includes every employee.
Well, there's a motion on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So Woodbury is picking up the full requirement for that.
.0044. Michael, I'm sure you've got that all figured out.
Yes.
He's our scribe, he does the draft of the minutes.
So if I can get that back from my Diana?
Oh.
Just because I have a shortage in the system that I can.
And Brandy, did you have anything else?
I do.
Okay.
So for, for the last two weeks, cash receipts taking in four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and seventy cents. Each of you should have, yeah, I gave you a full one, and a quarter. Breaking down to recording, dog licenses, bulk, keys, vehicles, et cetera. Deligency, I took in two thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents. The state of Vermont did electronic deposit for the property tax assessment, which was sixteen thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars, which goes toward the current tax revenue. Payroll for the last twelve, two weeks, twelve thousand and twenty-six dollars. Accounts payable, one hundred thousand seven hundred ten dollars and eighteen cents. I transferred a hundred thousand over the last weeks, and then today I kicked back twenty-four thousand back over into the money back there.
So we're not broke yet?
A little close for me. Especially for the funds that, since New Year, and, yeah, I can send it off, yeah, I mean, get that line credit.
Thank you.
That is? We're gonna have to get together and do some talking about the budget and the tax rate pretty soon, right?
As soon as the listeners can give the heads up that they're done.
Right, but we can work on it before then, we don't have to wait till the last minute.
Correct.
They should be done this week, but.
Yeah, we have an education we have already received, the numbers from that.
And that is going to be, what?
Twenty cents higher roughly than last year.
Yep. For homestead, twenty cents is gonna be about twelve percent. Non-homestead, sixteen percent, so it'll be about twenty-six cents. And hopefully our.
Municipal.
Our municipal will, I don't know, we'll see if we can make up some of that.
So that'll be another meeting that we need to schedule?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Brandy. Robin?
I received a phone call from a woman up in West Woodbury, and I sent a long email concern about the. Want to make sure I'm completely correct. About the man up there that has criminal warrants against him that's trying to lure young children into his vehicle.
So this was, that was the content, or the gist of the phone call that you received, yeah?
Yes, I'm going to talk about allegations.
What?
Yeah.
I'm gonna talk about allegations, I'm gonna be very careful.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we're not naming names.
Want me to follow up on that, Robin?
Sure.
Okay, so I made a whole bunch of phone calls to follow up on that. I talked to four different moms in West Woodbury, and I also spoke with the Hardwick PD. And so what I was able to, there's also a Facebook post circulating that is kind of like warning people about this. I'm gonna speak really slowly just to make sure I say this correctly. So these are the things that I have found that I feel like I can say with certainty, so that I'm not spreading rumors about things that maybe are not certain. So this person does have a very extensive criminal history. There are warrants out for him in Massachusetts, but they're not extraditable warrants, so our police officers can't just like send him back to Massachusetts. There are two official allegations of him approaching young girls inappropriately, not necessarily illegally. I don't believe those two instances, he necessarily tried to lure them anywhere, but he did speak to them in a way that a grown-up shouldn't be talking to an adolescent girl. There was an other, I guess at this point unsubstantiated rumor, which may or may not be true, but it wasn't reported to the police, that there was a child in Hardwick, an adolescent boy, that he offered drugs and tried to lure into the woods. But I don't think we can say that that's, it's, it's a rumor at this point.
Somebody told me that it happened to their child or something?
Several people told me that it happened to a child. But when I spoke with Hardwick PD about it, he said the other two incidents has been reported, but that one, the parents of the kid didn't report, so.
So we can't really?
We can't really like speak on it. What else did I find out? I asked the officer I spoke with just kind of what his thoughts were for the safety of the kids in our community, whether parents need to be on high alert, whether we need to be not eliminating our kids to walk down the road. And he is kind of off the cuff, so he was, you know, answering my question, maybe not for the record, but he said that he didn't want to say that parents shouldn't let their kids go anywhere because it's summer and, you know, we don't want to wreck their summer. But he did say that it would be good for people to be aware of this and to speak with their kids about how to handle it if a stranger approaches them, and just to kind of be like a little more aware. So that's all I've got on that.
Next. We still have thirteen unlicensed dogs from twenty twenty-three. And Pam is getting ready to send out a second notice for them to get licensed. So we have that. And here, Pam and I are gonna help the cemetery commission go through the cemetery deeds that we have at the office and update their cemetery plot surveys, so they know who is gonna be buried where or who is buried where.
You know, there's not only the, there's the book that has the actual deeds in it, the loosely binder, but there's also a couple of file folders in the file cabinet.
The folders are the ones I've found, so the final, the book must be on the.
Yeah, it's a green binder, it's, it's down below the, the bio records section.
Okay.
That's where the actual deeds should be.
And last week I did order two more land record recording books, which is gonna bring me back to, my vault is getting too small. I only have one more space for a recording book. So something to think about.
How quickly?
Blasting, maybe?
No. How quickly do you think that book will fill up? Like, how soon would you need to start using the extra space, do you think?
Well, it depends on how fast the land fills.
Okay.
I mean, it could be six months, it could be two years, it's a time limit.
Okay, and does that stuff have to be Catholic, under lock and key?
Yes.
Okay.
So Dana, you had mentioned that there's some things in there that maybe could be moved out.
Yeah, I would, I would be willing to take a look. I'm thinking that, well, I haven't really taken a look yet, but that maybe the top two rows on that first row could be put somewhere else, because nobody ever looks at those. And then you just have to move everything. You wouldn't want to do it every year, but if you do it two, two rows at a time, that's four books.
Yep.
And that would give you enough room for a few more years.
So short of that, though, what, what's the solution for something like that?
Hmm?
What's the solution for something?
A bigger vault.
A bigger vault.
A bigger vault.
That's what I'm asking.
Could there be like a fire safe, like a lock?
No, you still have to keep the higher copy.
Well, somewhere.
Somewhere, but that's, right, if they're digital, then.
Could, like, the downstairs area, the back room that isn't getting used? I know it's a possible flood area, but.
We got water in there this past weekend.
A little bit, right, or a lot?
No, you can turn on the door where it's, where it's all wet where it came in.
Yeah, oh, again, after last meeting when we got water in?
Yep.
But I think once that's all finished off, and Robin has ordered a whole bunch of nice new shelves, there is some stuff in the vault that can, that doesn't have to be in the vault.
Okay, I guess I was wondering if there was like a lockable, fireproof safe down in the lower area that was elevated to keep it, you know, out of danger of flooding? Do you think that would be sufficient?
Yeah.
The worst part is my stuff, speaking of my stuff. For audit capability, I have to retain mine, and they need to be in the safe. Unless they were digital, but, yeah, that's not.
Well, you do have that, that locking, fireproof file cabinet now, does that contribute to?
Slideboard orders.
That's all it is, the slideboard orders, which don't even have to be under lock and key.
This slide table will fit in there because of the fireproof all the way around it.
What, what would it take to digitize? I mean, I know it'd be a lot of work.
That's a lot of story.
Would we need to fund it?
Fifty thousand dollars probably, at least.
Fifty thousand?
Oh, it's more than that, it'd be more than that, it depends how far you want it back. But, you know, once you digitize it, yeah. Nobody's coming in to touch the originals, nobody, nobody's ever gonna be missing, no, yeah.
So is that worth the discussion for when we start? Budget season, or no?
Sounds like a lot of money to me. I, I realize it would be a really nice thing, but at the same time, just thinking of the cost versus like trying to find some more space.
And the people who do the title searches, they're, you know, I mean, okay, during COVID, that would be, they would have loved it if they could stay in their office and just look at things online, but some of them just prefer to come in because they could miss things if they're looking online.
But we do have people that come in and complain, why isn't this digitized?
Yeah, but that's tough for them.
Can I ask you another question? If we not, didn't digitize all of the past records, but started digitizing what we have now, that couldn't cost fifty thousand dollars to do that, right? But then we wouldn't need to store any of the, like, from this point forward, we wouldn't need to store any of the physical documents.
I think we still have to keep them.
We'd still have to keep them.
But we don't need to keep, it sounds like we don't need to keep them at the town hall, right?
No, she just said we would, have to keep all the papers that we have now. It's just that going forward, we wouldn't need as much bulk, right?
Oh, yes, yeah, for sure.
Didn't you say we don't have to keep up, we have to keep all those books that are there now?
Yes, because of number.
Yeah, yeah, if we didn't.
No, I mean, he says if it was digitized, if we did like forty years.
Still have to be there.
So if we digitized it, it solved the safety issue, or would it not solve that?
No.
Okay.
Digitizing does not solve.
It's more convenient for whoever wants to do the research.
It's not gonna save anybody any money.
And it'd be a lot easier to open up digitized water.
Someday my old select board is gonna give out, oh my God.
So then it sounds like we need to try to budget for a new vault.
No, we didn't, there's no room for a new vault, we'll have to go to a new building.
Well, at some point we're gonna run out of space, it sounds like.
Yeah, I guess that's, no.
All right. I guess we'll, we'll give this for another, when we have like.
By the way, I don't know if you heard that the old guy?
Yes, I was gonna say that.
He was the one that did the design for the existing vault. We're looking at the old records, he was on the select board when, when they did the existing vault. Before that, we just had two huge old metal safes.
Does the, you already asked this, but I didn't hear the answer. Does the vault have to be on site? Like, could some of the way older stuff be in a separate vault elsewhere?
I think that's the liability of it. You would have to have a town employee with it, because that vault would have to be locked. It wouldn't be the combination out to just anybody.
Right, okay, I guess I was just thinking of like this building, or just thinking of places stuff could go.
And I guess, you know, just to maybe suggest possible solutions, like if going forward we digitized everything and that all got stored offsite, but in a vault safely, public would still have access to those digitized copies, but the, and we would be maintaining any future documents. Because it's not like, it's not like the, we're, even if you find two rows of space on some top shelf in the left-hand corner, like, eventually you're gonna run out of that, too.
Yeah, well, that's gonna take you another four or five years, maybe by that time they'll decide to do digitization.
But then when are you gonna, where are you gonna put those books on YouTube and on that top shelf? These stuff being in that vault?
No, that's what I mean, there, there is other stuff. For example, poll records. Used to be poll taxes, there are a whole bunch of black books up there. I don't know if we have to keep those in the vault, or if we have to keep them anymore.
Handwritten ones?
What?
Handwritten ones?
Some of our, some of them.
Why wouldn't the law save that?
What?
Why wouldn't the law save that?
Well, I don't know if you know the ones I mean, but they're not handwritten. I mean, my name is in there, so, but. It's not whether you want to, but whether you need to, I guess, when it comes down to vault space. We do have that extensive policy that we came up with as far as what had to be kept, right? And when it could be discarded.
Yes, somebody would have to want me to do that, I can't be catching more tails out of your list.
Brandy, we worked really hard on that.
But those poll ones that you were talking about, is that something that we could turn over to the Historical Society?
That's, well.
If they have a, if they have a.
Yeah, yeah, maybe, I don't know.
All of its history of Woodbury is.
Right, some of that stuff could go in, some of that stuff could go in the basement if it's not stuff that has to be in the vault.
Well.
But anyways.
In the interest of time, Mr. Fix, real quick, if you.
We deal with this in the Gazette, and the state does have archives, and the state takes the Gazette records, the state has a sort.
The state has everything.
I would think, if I were in your shoes, I would appoint a subcommittee to look into what the real options are, because I think I'm hearing things that aren't looking at all of your options.
We do also have all our records on microfilm, is it? Yeah.
Cofiled.
Huh?
Cofiled.
No, not cofiled, but the other, the people that used to come in and take two or three books at a time, and they put them on the microfilm, and they sent us, and they keep a copy, and they send one copy for the state archives. They store one copy for us, and they bill us like a few dollars a year.
If I didn't digitize on microfilm, I'd just take that home.
Yeah, they actually sent us, one time they sent us a flash drive with a whole lot of records on it. And what they wanted was a lot of money, so I sent it back. That is a few years ago, but they could probably still do that.
Well, in the interest of time, maybe we should move on to Alfie's road report.
So last week I was asked to get ahold of the state department for the road. I reached out to him, and he's, he's saying that it's scheduled in the next couple of weeks. So definitely nothing nails down yet.
Thank you.
That's where the. The, the people at the authority are more than happy to drill for us. Remember, we chose a date. They said they'd just walk while they're drills down.
So they're, they're flexible?
They are flexible.
That's good, yeah.
So the files are in the export as far as the schedule will allow. And the person who wants to be there to do it, to collect the information.
Okay.
So that's what we are there. My schedule is, now, done. I upgraded those two culvers that I noticed.
How'd they do after that last?
Say again?
How'd they do after this last rain, this week?
I haven't been out there today.
Yeah.
But I haven't got any calls either, so.
Yeah, good.
They're okay. We did get the large squash culvert came in in time to put it in with the big excavator before that. So that's on, it's out there now. And pretty much just put some washpots in the graders here and there. And pretty much just put some wash ponds and graders here and there. And hopefully soon we'll be able to start on some kind of projects.
I have a question. This is kind of a question for Skip, but at last time, didn't we talk about whether or not that West Woodbury or the Cape Brook Road, you might be able to sneak that in with some of the other FEMA, some other FEMA project?
It's true.
And?
We have a conference call on Wednesday and that's part of your agenda.
Okay.
A lot of, maybe they should talk about it. And even the latest one, which is, you know, rail track.
Yeah.
So our pictures have come with the mess to be reset. So I'm gonna send those pictures to FEMA folks and say, hey, we have to reset this and we want to have the cost reimbursed to us as a mitigation project. Because in essence it is, because you're gonna drop another P P or something like that. So it doesn't wash out.
Well, I, I think what it is is a header. Water ended up underneath the culvert and sort of bubbled up in the middle and kind of washed it out. The culvert's still in place, but there was so, so little room along that twenty foot culvert. We could have gone hard on the upstream side. So I think a header would do a lot there.
What's a, what's a header?
Which is just a, it's a, like a concrete culvert that will go around the whole culvert.
Yep.
And you put the concrete so it's a couple of feet below the, the stream level. And then it's not underexpering and working its way under the culvert.
Now, this is not one of the culvers that was replaced earlier, right?
It is.
It is?
It's a brand culvert we just put in during the flood last year.
So you think a larger one is needed or do you think this headwell would take care of it?
Well, in the Russia thing, we weren't, there was no way to get hydraulic study to determine the size of culvert. So I doubled the size that was in there. And I think what happened is debris came down and plugged a four foot culvert. And it's four foot diameter. That's a lot, you know? And so I don't know how you can remedy that. I mean, it's, it's twice the size of culvert that was there. It just undermined it, you know, the water ate it underneath it. And, and plus with the debris, plug in it, half plug it and make water back up and then it sort of gave over the road some.
So, but it's not on a stream, right? So you don't need the V Trans H and H thing? Is that right or is it?
Well.
It's not on a road, so it probably doesn't need V Trans approval anyways. Yeah, unless FEMA wants it.
Still, it's a right away one. It's still a right away, a right away. So I think that would fall for, and also especially the FEMA money.
They might want that.
Going into it, they'd probably require at this point, uh, H and H. So that just slows everything up.
Yeah, really.
But, I mean, I can go and fill in the hole. Like I said, the culvert's still in place. I can go and fill it and make it passable. But clearly it's not permanent fixed.
Would you put the header in without H and H study or is that not, does that make sense?
Well, that comes to, to, back to FEMA. If FEMA's gonna put money into it there, they may want the H and H to determine if that culvert that we've got is big enough before they put more, more money into it.
But they didn't need the H and H the first time, right?
We just fixed it.
Yeah, I know.
Because it was in such, we were in such a rush during the flood, we just put a culvert there to get it passable. And we, we did a lot of work that we didn't do the H and H guys for just because of the nature of the.
Didn't need it.
Beast that they're fighting. So, but now it's sort of after the fact, after the rush, they may expect us to do the H and H program.
Again, I, I need to get Diana's or your response to Diana's question whether or not the stream runs all the time?
I believe it is minimal. It runs all the time.
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
It runs all the time.
And you, they, so if they did the H and H, if they came out and did that study, you think they would recommend maybe a headwall instead of replacing it? Or do they make recommendations? I mean, they did on the.
Hard to say depending on what they, what they see for a, a large storage area. You know, that's how they determine what size of culvert. Most likely they would say a box culvert or something else. I mean, it's, these storms are just amazing. They, you know, the water is just popping out the sky around here all the time. You know, and then you get a little bit of debris that plugs the culvert. And now you've still got the same amount of water and the flow is cutting out.
Sounds like they might have another event Wednesday and Thursday.
They have tie things? So if we don't have that H and H study, if it's not required, will that culvert, that collar thing, will that be considered a permanent fix?
I would feel much more confident in, yes. But.
Any more questions for your person?
He said there was a chance you could put a culvert on there and it was fix it. And I'm just wondering if I'm gonna consider a permanent fix?
Well, I sort of thought the four foot culvert was a permanent. Doubly the size, but I don't know that we have any permanent fixes anymore.
I mean.
I mean, look at the state out here. Their, their culvert, they put it in, they put a lot of money into it, but then it's not permanent.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean.
Although if we have such things as a permanent fix, but the culvert on there, it certainly stopped water from rolling and undermining the period of the culvert. Much more water for that storm, you wouldn't have that culvert there. It would have washed out. Because it washed, like underneath the culvert, washed halfway across the trail. So much more water in that culvert would have just floated into the culvert.
Could you wait until next week to put rocks on it?
Sure.
Your motive there?
But we're supposed to get some control of the grade, you know, it's been Thursday this week.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, wow.
Well, I'm just, you know, it's, it's sort of the town's responsibility to keep that open. And so that's sort of our pressure and, and residents in the area have brought to our attention. So anyway, I think we should do something.
Is it a danger right now that people who might be riding the trail and not know that it's there?
That's, that's part of the, that's part of the four wheeler club trail.
Yeah, it's, it's marked.
Okay.
I mean, it's, some people have got some sticks in it. There's a couple of reflective posts that, you know, so it is marked.
Okay.
But should people know not to go on that trail at all? I mean, they're gonna just turn around?
They can get around it.
You think so?
Access to their trails, correct?
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's still accessible.
Oh, they could still, oh, okay. Oh, it looked to me like.
Until you get to this washout, I wouldn't take a truck over this washout.
That's what I mean.
But you, could you get a four wheeler around him?
You can just about get a four wheeler.
Just about.
But it's undermined underneath.
Right.
Right.
So, which, which is where the liability is.
Yeah.
If a four wheeler or a, or a side by side, which is a little heavier, breaks that bridge that's rapid, that's there, and you go into it, now the town could be held out.
So was it your intention to kind of get to that sooner than later?
I was waiting for this discussion. Yeah, I can get to it fairly quickly. Or I can put a close in that, in that, or a trail close or whatever.
I mean, is there any, is there any reason for them to like get on at Buck Lake Road and go north? If they're gonna just have to turn around, wouldn't they wanna know that they should go another way? Seems to be like this.
Well, that would be the idea of closing the road.
Right, yeah.
Because then they don't, they don't have conditions to be on, which they do go on. And then if they're at their own risk. You know, maybe, maybe we should do that regardless until it's in effect.
Makes sense, for sure.
Or just put signs up so that we're protected from liability.
I think so. So a four foot, what's next after a four foot culvert? A six foot?
Two foot.
Eight foot?
Well, you can get them, you can get them bigger.
Really?
But.
But then you have to be able to dig down enough to.
You still, right, you gotta get them long enough. They're made, they're made by the squash culvert, so it's wider and not as high. But that's money.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, there's, there's, there's gonna be some money involved in, no matter what we do there. But I can do, I can sort of fill the road back and make it, make it safe. And I can try to pack some saw or something down on inlet of the culvert to stop it from going underneath the culvert. Which again, it's sort of a temporary fix, but. But to pour, to pour header on there, there's gonna be some, you know, we gotta dig out, we gotta build a form. Get a concrete truck out there to pour.
Oh, good.
Can you hand mix or mix the concrete in?
Uh, the slides of that would be.
Oh, four foot culvert, yeah.
Yeah, that would be probably four yards, I'm guessing.
Would you get it? Could a concrete truck get through there?
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we had our ten wheel trucks out there. Ten wheel trucks as well, so. So we could, we could get a concrete truck out there.
I wonder if you could make a sign that says, maybe make basically unsafe for vehicles more than four foot wide or something. So if people wanted to ride a bike or something, they, or walk on it, they feel good.
Yeah.
I would reserve.
No? Okay. No, all right. It is.
Four foot wide, top, bottom, one, top, but it's.
My suggestion would be to close the road as soon as tomorrow morning.
Makes sense to me as well.
And then I guess I would leave it up to you, you know, more than the board, but how to repair it.
I can put a, I can get it passable again with a couple of little gravel and a little bit of astec layer time.
But in the meantime, you can put up a closed sign.
Yeah, full sign, I can do that.
And you can send Vanessa out to take a picture?
I can, I, I know it's not my place, but I'm gonna stick up anyway. At the last part of the electric department board meeting, our interim H B, or the interim H B manager, Scott Johnson, who's running Orsfield Department of State. He was at a conference where there's apparently funding, and Michael may wanna know about this, and he doesn't, for future, for any water event, it doesn't have to be from Europe for a living. Cause this sounds like something going forward, you know, planning for the future.
That's the flood, so yeah.
Oh, the one you've been talking about, yeah.
I mean, the, the recommendation there is that everybody in town, write down everything that possibly could have related to water, and the feds and state will come to you town, go through the one by one, and tell you where to go to cement grain.
Oh, my goodness.
And they're offering an incredible amount of support.
Is that the one where they're also offering to find the contractors and?
I don't know.
Okay.
It's the resilience.
Michael, you had a question or a comment?
Yeah, I would suggest that the road just be closed for now. Just because, you know, there are a lot of roads in town right now that are in really sad shape from heavy rain that we have got. And if we don't address those properly, they're gonna be in worse shape on Friday morning.
So they need, need to take priority as opposed to recreational trail?
There are roads that are, especially the hills that are pretty well eroded at this moment. The rail trail is fine, but that's not a, it's not a public.
Not a priority really, so.
So just for liability, maybe we can just close the road and, and, you know, have the workers get to it when they can. This is my suggestion.
That makes sense to me. And we, we just, we just talked about closing that section, right? Like if people wanna try the rest of the railroad trail, they could theoretically.
No, that was, that was what I asked. Why would they even get on to the trail if, if they can't go all the way through?
Well, because they might wanna go partway through.
What?
They might wanna go partway through.
I can, I can probably, the best thing would be to put four signs.
Okay.
Two, two right close to the, to the site that's damaged.
And two with the cross.
Now, check.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Wherever town, and Harburg can have a major line and one at Buck Lake.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Then recover. If, if somebody goes past our sign at that point, they're on the. And, and people will, I mean, they, they do all the time. I'm putting the culvert inside the road, you know, on these larger roads and they still come, try to come through. But at least the liability is off of us.
Should we suggest that Harburg put one on their side too?
Well, the last time it flooded, I put it, I put road calls right in Harburg.
Yeah. Where it goes into, yeah.
Give me that at the Harburg.
They're not, they're not having a problem with it. I guess I can talk to.
No, well, they could do it. They could do their end. Or you could do it.
Yeah. We'll, we'll close it. I'll close it tomorrow.
Okay.
And I agree with Michael, we do still have some washouts on, on some of those. So it would be nice to put that as a priority for this week and then maybe figure out out there.
Figure out this.
Yeah, did we ever get any reimbursement from Snowmobile Club for the first time about washout?
We reached out to remind them that they, I reached out to remind them that they had pledged that. But at the time, we were waiting to hear like exactly what we were gonna be reimbursed from FEMA. And so we had talked about just kind of reminding them, but saying that we're not sure. You know, like if FEMA covers most of it, which they're gonna do, we don't necessarily need them to pay us for something that FEMA's gonna be paying. So no, we were not reimbursed, but they did, they were.
But we could still, if we had a reason to dumb them for some more, I think they should contribute.
They remembered that they were gonna.
What?
They remembered that, you know, that they were gonna put money in.
Anything else, Alfie?
Just a question and more for your information. I'm getting a lot of requests for gravel on crosswalk roads.
I'm sorry?
I'm getting a lot of requests for gravel on crosswalk roads.
Really?
That you can kind of repair themselves. I know it's been happening in the past. And you have a line item.
Yeah, thank you.
For that crosswalk roads. I just wanna make sure that, one, the selector knows about it. And then two, the selector is okay with it.
You're not talking camp roads, right?
Right, class four. We're class fours.
Yeah, okay. Cause a lot of times we do get requests for people on camp roads that would like some.
Right. No, these are, these are, those are the class four.
And it's our responsibility to maintain.
But you said something about dudes.
No?
Bridges and culverts, but I mean, there's a lot of crosswalk roads that are completely, I mean, I get to roam, but I don't know if you, I don't think you could.
These are roads that people are using?
Our liability is culverts on crossbars.
And bridges.
But also to keep them.
Oh, erosion. Oh, okay.
And erosion.
And erosion. So there's our, there's our interpretation.
I mean, it seems like a benefit if we're getting free labor, like the cost of, is gravel crazy expensive?
Define crazy expensive. Everything is expensive, but I risk, if they're willing to do it with their machine, with their time, we don't have to only just double the pot for them. I think it is a benefit to the town because it's, it's a crosswalk road. It's, it's an asset to the town. So if we can keep that up, I think it's a great idea.
And if they.
I'm for it. I just wanna make sure everybody else.
As long as you know who it is and where. As long as you know who it is and where the gravel's going to go and who's going to do the work. Because we have gotten in messes before with somebody going ahead and doing their own work on Class Four Road, and. That's why we ended up with Old Quarry Road, right?
FEMA's taking care of that.
No, this is an older situation that you are well aware of, but you won't stay in the top of it.
So, yeah, I mean, the people that have been contacting me, I know they live on a Class Four. And it's, it's, the location where I dumped it is where it's been dumped in the past. So kind of going on that. So just wanted you guys to know and make sure that you didn't have issues with it. It's not a lot of gravel compared to what we spent.
Unbelievable, yeah.
You know, it's like one or two loads here and there, it's not, it's not really a lot.
Thanks for letting us know.
Do you ever think of whether one of your operators might want to work a few hours of overtime and run around with a grader on a Friday or something like that? Because it doesn't seem like things are not getting fixed up from the last storm.
Well, the last one was Sunday.
Yeah, I know.
So Friday was not helpful. But we were out there this morning. I mean, I don't know how I can get to there very fast, our plant parade, washouts.
Right.
While it was raining, because you just can't do it. But if there's a need for overtime, my guys are there for us.
Okay, good, that's good. You know that they were good for that, right? They spend what they need to spend.
After looking now, it's very hard to just carry the chainsaw in your car, because the trees, especially that road, the white birches are, it's going to be, yeah, my chainsaw, it's going to sit in my car. Because it's, it's going to be one of those, when you get a heavy wet storm, all those white birches are just going to be blocking the road.
Yeah.
But at the point, you're not ready to be cut yet.
That's another whole conversation that we shall have. We have, speaking of that, we have started mowing, roadside mowing.
Okay, yeah.
And we have targeted the washouts. But there's only three of us, and it's going to be this summer already. Nothing like last summer, I do, but the summer is.
We're not done yet.
We're not done yet, that's right.
I was still catching up from last summer.
Right, oh, yeah. And then we go back and do some of the stuff that we've already done. I mean, it's just, for example, Ted's, or have you done that? We've raved it for the last three weeks. Because it just keeps, it just keeps washing back up. Not completely, but it's enough, so small fires are not a problem with it. And so we were there today after yesterday's storm, or Saturday's storm, which was awful. Yeah, so we're, we're doing what we can, and I, I feel like people are getting around.
It's all passing, that's my priority.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No questions.
Thanks, Alfie. Skip wrote the recovery officer's report. Something of a meeting to Wednesday, far? No, Wednesday.
Thank you.
So one of our last meetings, I think it was, I think it was April 22nd, April 24th, I gave this little flowchart, which is where our projects are. And so our projects, as of April 22nd, 2024, over at Port Bay Street of FEMA, scoping Japanese, something about this consolidated resource center for the recall. So, you know, sent numerous emails to our friends at FEMA. And then, also, to the Spanish plan document, and this is what the FEMA program delivery managers, this is what they're talking about. And some of us, one of our projects can become obligated. So they go through this, and this is pretty much this flowchart, but then, you know, all of the, the exercise spreadsheet. So in essence, all of our projects were in FEMA's hands December of 2023. So that's the third, third road down, that was on December of 2023. Now, Phase Three, pending Consolidated Resource Center project development, there are still, excuse me, only four projects there. And that's been only four projects there since April this year. Those are the rail trail, quarry, and Billy Hill Road, Cadda Road, and East Hill Road. The rest of our ten projects are just in this continuous spin at FEMA. There is one other pending insurance completion, and pending insurance period, there's a couple more roads down, and that's the town office. So FEMA has all that information, and, you know, it's just, it's just really frustrating. And so, again, Danielle and I have done all our work, and we're just relying on it. So just as an aside, we have one project, Old Quarry Road and Billy Hill. That was the first one to begin Consolidated Resource Center, and it was this year. And I just looked at it today, and there's a little history detail on the FEMA grants portal. And there are 124 discrete entries into this project. So in other words, one person in FEMA has touched this 124 times. It could be the same person, or it could be different people, but someone has been in this, you know, really straightforward project of just fixing the road 124 times. It's just stunning how much we offer this to them.
Was it Vermont Digger that did a story a couple days ago about how much, what percentage of the FEMA money is going back to them for administration?
You know, that was something that, because VDR, it's, it's whatever.
No. I don't believe it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's crazy, you know, they, it's just, so. Right now, there's a Zoom conference, video conference set up for this Wednesday at nine AM. And the month is, if they want to sign on, just be reserved, you know, and go keep in time. So right now, we have these, Andy Flag, who's the State of Vermont Emergency Manager. He's our liaison between the state and FEMA. We have the FEMA Program Delivery Manager, going to be on the mitigation officer, because we have three sites and perhaps more sites now that might qualify for mitigation funding. And we have a gentleman from Louisiana, who's the tabletop science section, and I can talk to you about that tabletop science section, which was a service. So our agenda includes zero obligated projects. And again, an obligated project is when the CRC, Consolidated Resource Center, gets through looking at all our stuff and says, what we did is correct in terms of. They agree that the labor was excessively, they agree that the materials were spot on to how big the damage was, and any retro equipment we used, you know, fit the bill. So no obligated projects. So I'm going to ask one, you know, we, we've done everything, they're there, we signed all the project evaluation certifications. And that FEMA's, we certified all the projects that are complete, yes, are complete. And that, and again, Old Quarry Road, which is Project 739498, has been up to CRC since April 15th, which to me is just stunning, you know? And I'm going to ask him about this spending plan project guidance, you know, the process, if you're running it correctly. And I think he's just going to, a month at a time, yeah, it's going to take him some time. Anyhow, second item on the agenda is tabletop site inspection report. So a couple of weeks ago, we had a tabletop site inspection, and there was no Zoom. So it was just like a phone conference, we had video, and it was a true service. So we talked about the town offices, Town Highway 23 and Town Highway 24. And the purpose of the site inspection is just that, you know, take the information, what was the damage, how much it's costing, and chilracks, and invasions. But the tabletop site inspection team realized that the site inspection had already been completed for Town Highway 23 and 24. Somehow that got lost in the discussion, but many had it, and Alfie and Alvin took a look at it, and there is a PE question, so they got the site inspection report. And that just sat on someone's desk for a while. And the gentleman on the phone said, oh, yeah, we have that. And no one else on the team understood that the site inspections had already been done. So we talked about the town offices, and they have the town offices listed as a municipal building that supports a mayor and staff. So we've got a director, say, municipal government, we're known there, there's the director of town clerk, assistant town clerk, and treasurer. And I haven't seen that site inspection report, and John said he was going to give it to me, something to be, in two days. So the third agenda item is mitigation opportunities discussion. So mitigation opportunities, Cadda Road, they came to us and they said, yeah, we believe that Cadda Road, it's a good possibility that there's some mitigation that we can do there, and that's great. And we talked about the rail trail, and one of my questions to them, among others, is going to be, who does what? If you're going to do some mitigation, who designs that?
Yeah.
Is it going to be FEMA that designs that, or they're going to come out and say, this will be, this will be. And I want to be sure that if you do this mitigation, these mitigation projects, that I want to see progress. So my question to them are, most of it will be, do we design it to FEMA's tracks? Or do we decide to design it to be trans, or to those tracks? So I have to.
Or maybe use that money redoing things that were done last year.
And the fourth item is what's next? What kind of additional documentation do we need for which projects? And that's what I'm sure it's what's needed to do the projects for, because I have no idea what more we can do to do these projects. And I'm also going to focus on the fiscal year 2025, so that area of time between July 1st and until property tax, I'm just going to add. Where is Treasury, does it look so? So I would like to have these on the stock portfolio. Right now, we have obligated, not obligated, nothing obligated, in his hands, all our projects total 296,611 dollars.
You said 396?
Two hundred and ninety-six.
Oh, I thought it was over 300 last year.
The total, total projects, see, we have projects that are finished. Total projects is 342,000 dollars. So the FEMA share and the state's share, you could expect sometime in the future to receive 334,637 dollars. Where their share will not be 7,527.
And that's before the two bridges and the.
That's before the Town Highway 23 and 24 mitigation work begins, but that's a whole different process with RFPs and drilling, things like that. So I'll write for an extension on those two projects, because they were going to continue this year.
And there's a county road extension included in this? And that's not totally done, right?
Yeah.
You're waiting for the H and H, or?
Right, for one call, we're waiting for the H.
So in essence, you know, it's status quo, you know, I just, you know, get the floor every couple of days to see if there are any money obligated, and so. I'm hoping that the people assembled on my side that we can get some forward movement. We've done, we've done it all. You know, I'm sure there are other towns that are feeling the same frustration, but FEMA has it. You know, there are, you see many unknowns of FEMA. There are known unknowns, and you go down the wrong step, and there's unknown unknowns, so.
What you don't, what you don't know, you don't know.
So anyhow, that's, that's where we are, and I hope to get some answers to these questions, and I'll fill out till I record and send it to you folks.
I wonder if, I mean, it would be great if we knew something before we set the tax rate, but I wonder if we can make any assumptions when we're setting the tax rate about what we might get within, what we should be able to count on within the next six months?
Well, presumably, I'd get some money from the federal government, I think is a stretch.
The what?
Is a stretch.
To presume that we can get.
Oh, really?
So I wouldn't do that, if I should say, you know, I'm a cautious guy until, you know, the money starts flowing in, projects become obligated. I can't see any way to not do what Brandy's done, was it 242,000 dollars? That were underwater for the FEMA part of the economy, so I would wait. And then next year, when the money's hopefully come in, then the tax rate hopefully would be less. So that's my report, sorry, I don't have any more.
Again, thank you for doing it.
You're welcome.
We're running a little bit behind schedule, but I think if we're efficient, we can knock out a few of these other, other items. The next item would be the possible flood mitigation projects and just status reports on Buck Lake Brook and on Cadda Road.
Selecting to rock Buck Lake Brook, I think values and information, thanks Danielle for the stuff that we pulled up.
Oh, okay.
I was hopeful, I've got some other information from Skip based on flooding last year. We're trying to get some information from the fire department, but haven't received anything yet. But the deadline for the pre-application is August 16th, that's still a solid date, so this is just a pre-application, so I don't think I need to have everything that I gathered. I just want to make a good argument for why they should approve our pre-application.
Is there, do you have a project yet?
The project is to try to do mitigation work for Buck Lake Brook, which is, you know, that's the project. So, so I'm going to be probably putting it together this week and sharing that with the folks at the VDRFCC, the Mutual Protection. And they'll help me put together the final pre-application. That's the steps of that.
And it sounds like both you and Alfie have some updates on Cadda Road, or maybe there's none today? Which is fine.
I just put this on, on the menu, just in case there was anything to date, we're talking about the, like, the $17,000, whatever.
Be cautious, and so that there is perhaps mitigation opportunities. opportunities at Cabinet Road. And the initial project to repair, as it is now, was $17,000. So FEMA will pay up to $17,000 for mitigation. So whether that's, what'd you say, a ditch? A wall, a stone wall ditch, or something like that. But what I know is the board reported, you know, it said FEMA specification don't be after their work. True, or is it something in the management book? Which the blueprint book broke, or use another code. That's a bust. And I don't want to afford any money without having FEMA say that at this point.
Yeah. And so there's...
Yeah, there was some offering money to...
And there is someone you can ask that question of?
That's one of them.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, good.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Proposed animal control ordinances. Diana, I'm assuming that is your agenda item?
Yeah, I just didn't want to blow this off about explaining that just the work involves and all the posting of notices and all that stuff.
Yeah, I sent you that.
You sent me some stuff, yeah, you did. And this is the new stuff from this year, maybe? You want to look at that and see what, it has to be changed again before we go out?
Oh, you want me to read the order list?
I already did.
Well, that was from 2019, and after 2019, that ordinance was treated as statutes in 2015.
Was what?
Right.
Right. We didn't do it, so, you know, but we're going to do it now. It would be nice to have it.
So you want me to take that as a test?
Would you? Please? This is our paid with lights.
Did you want to?
Well, yeah, I would. I'm just wondering, before you go putting a lot of effort into it, we've never talked about this, but if we have to continually update the ordinances, I'd be just happy to get rid of some ordinances rather than update.
Well, this one was, yeah, the one I gave the guy today, that was from 2017, maybe? No. The one I had you copy, the current, the current animal control ordinance.
I think that was from 2019.
As of VLCT, there were a lot of them, a bunch.
So I, you know, I'll look at it and update it.
Thank you.
But the resource we used in 2019 was after we updated it. We sent it to the VLCT, and they were trying to look at it. And it was okay. So it was suggested the board followed that same procedure. I updated, sent it to the folks, I had no standing at VLCT.
They don't even talk to you. They're like that.
I just sent you a bird ordinance that Paul's really wanted us to do. So I sent the ordinance. I sent an abstract of the ordinance that you put in the newspaper. And I also sent you a checklist that you should follow in terms of when it should be posted, you know, timeframes in which it's posted, can be easily populated, and things like that.
Can I get, just in the background on this?
Yeah.
So this is, this ordinance, you, in 2019?
The board already adopted it.
The board adopted this?
Yes, this is an ordinance, we have binder in the office. Please come and look at it. The ordinance is that it already been set up by previous select members. So we have them, and they're in place. So it's not a matter of adopting a new one, these are already in place.
This is really, like, like you said, it's an update, right?
We already have these ordinances in place.
And this is our animal control ordinance that gives the animal control officer the authority to deal with nuisances and dangerous dogs. And, you know, in the past, we had an animal control officer who would actually go door to door and make sure people have their licenses. He don't, he did that a couple of years, and that was enough.
Is, and the recommendations for the updates come from?
The select word at the time, it looks like in 2017, it was Michael Gregg, Guy Ruel, and Thomas Lindsay.
So when things arise, that's when they usually get regested.
Yeah, there were, there were issues that year regarding dangerous dogs that people couldn't walk on certain roads because dogs would chase them and so on. And that was the same year that the large animal ordinance was suggested because in that same neighborhood, there were horses running loose and things like that. But that, I don't think we're going to go ahead with that because you said you're not in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of any of them, to be honest.
But the updates that came, that are suggested came from?
The legislature.
The legislature. But are they suggestions, or they're like?
No, I haven't worked on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't read this for years.
Could I ask a quick question? This 2019 ordinance, I think you just got skipped update, was that, or update to the 2011 ordinance, was that accepted and became part of the ordinance?
Oh, yeah, well, there's no...
You were talking about 2017, so I didn't quite...
Yeah, I don't, I thought, so this is, the last one that was drafted and didn't go forward was 2017. And I have here the adoption history. Anyway, best we just...
Just to clarify though, I guess I'm asking you, Diana, there is no requirement for our town to have any of these ordinances, right? That's purely by choice?
I don't know. I'd have to look up the statute on all of them and see whether or not we are required to have ordinances.
Because how does that cheat? And the board, the board has already approved them.
Approved, yeah. But, well, no, they didn't go through the process for this one.
Well, the new one, not the new one, we still have to uphold, somebody, the president, has to uphold our policy.
The one that was, right. That was adopted like 2011, I think, yeah. But it's still a different one. So you would suggest that we just do away with that one totally?
I would, for a couple of reasons. One is, we've already seen how hard it is for anyone to enforce anything. The person who's been kind enough to be our animal control officer, I'm happy that he's willing to fill the role, but the things that he described doing when there's a problem with an animal are things that, like, if I, as a person, had a problem with an animal, I would just do those things myself. I would talk to the owner. If I was being attacked or threatened, I would probably use myself. So I'm not, you're talking over me. I'm not really sure why it makes sense, you know, to have to have the town in charge of enforcing things that we could just as easily have individuals do on their own.
Yeah, it would be nice. I mean, if everybody was respectful of their neighbors, we wouldn't have to have zoning either.
I'd love to not have zoning. That'd be on my list for things to get rid of.
Yeah. Those are things that, something like zoning has to be approved by the voters anyway. This, this doesn't.
Just a question, if we didn't have the ordinance, would, I don't know the answer to this, would the town have any recourse at all to deal with, let's say, you know, in the instance that this gentleman goes to the sheriff's department and has to have an animal impounded, would the town have the ability to do that if we didn't have an ordinance?
I would think it would, it falls in town, right?
We do have to pay for it.
But I guess, I mean, would we have any authority to do it if we didn't have an animal ordinance? We would not.
There would be liability on us.
So I think there are some benefits in the long run, in my opinion, in the long run. I agree with you that I think it is probably always a good first step for neighbors to talk to neighbors and take care of those things. But at least sometimes, some of these ordinance, and maybe we should look at them with a critical eye, are, when things get really out of hand. Maybe they, maybe they help us? Not all, maybe not all, but some. I guess, I still am a little confused about the update, though. We have to, there's a requirement for an update?
I'm just looking at this, and it says at 160, it also gives municipalities this explicit authority to regulate by ordinance the control of livestock running at large. So that's a large animal ordinance, that's a no. Livestock under the law, being Catalyst, as she swang those candles, followed the regular American bus. In response to those statutory changes to the legal cities and towns, half said we'll review and update on all of the control and that's a good sources to come to this. So again, the VLCT and the Municipal Assistance Center probably will have a model statute for ordinance, a model ordinance based on statute for towns to cut and close. So my recommendation would be not to do anything with that for large animal ordinance sitting in the middle. Wait till the legal cities and towns, there's something, copy that, and I will eliminate that step going after that. That's if you choose to...
If we choose to adopt it.
Have that explicit, or if you don't choose to have that explicit authority, so be it.
Do we need any further discussion?
Well, are you willing to look into, review the new legislation and see if there's anything that affects this that you drafted in 2017?
Sure. But it appears as though it's just the animal...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
It appears as though it's just the animal control officer's authority that is changed.
Right, I read that part. That's it?
It appears as though, I'll look at that.
Thank you.
Oh, actually, I have 167.
All right, thanks, Skip.
But again, go to the VLCT.
Okay.
We're on to updates in other businesses. I think that if we jump down, it's okay if we just jump down to the town hall roof. I sent both of you my first pass at the scope of work and the RFP.
I made a mistake of printing it out.
You did, okay. Yeah, it was just a first pass. Quick questions that I have.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, and it's not done, but it's a first pass. But the necessity for a project, at what's, what level? I think we're going to eliminate the possibility of some people willing to bid on it that maybe are not bonded, and the necessity for a project of this size for contractors to be bonded? And I don't know the answer to that.
I don't know.
Okay. Because in that, in the scope of work, Michael, that you shared, for the, for the Woodbury Library, it required bonding, that the contractor be bonded.
Okay. I mean, I would defer to Brandy on that because that would seem to imply to me that, you know, when it's audited by the LCT, or that they may have required that. I don't know that for sure. I don't know why that was in that scope of work, but there must have been a reason.
Yeah, I don't, I never saw the layout of the library construction.
Okay. I can share.
Because that grant's not coming through. It may be a spec of just a grant.
Well, this is for the roof that we did a few years ago, not for the...
It was a RFP for the roof.
That's what he was using as a template, was the one that Michael did for the library.
And it had bonding in there, that it could bond?
Okay, insurance question. I think, basically, I had no idea why it was there, but there must have been a reason.
Okay. So is there someplace I should check to see whether it stays in or stays out? Because I know that for folks that are, maybe would be interested in this size project, they're not.
I would leave it out if anything was done. I mean, I don't know why it was in there. I don't even know what bonding used to be, honestly.
I mean, they have to have insurance, and they have to have workers comp.
Granted, I concur, but they do have to have insurance.
For sure.
Workers comp, that's where we get kind of lost. If it's not workers comp, that's where we can get different than bonding.
Funding is a big deal.
That's where they put money out, because they lost.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's...
They have to buy a bond, and then they might get their money back.
Imagine investing that in a square roof.
Okay.
Contractor, not appropriate.
All right, so I'll eliminate that. And then there were some pretty explicit, because that was a shingle roof, there were some pretty explicit, like, manufactured details about what types of shingles to use and when. This is a metal roof, it's a little bit different. And I don't know how formal we need to be, but I did talk to the guys at Arcade, and they were going to print out a spec sheet on, like, basically a commercial grade exterior.
Corrugated.
Corrugated metal roof. And hopefully, we can kind of substitute some of those details for that.
Yeah, I think the specs for the leather roof were, you know, basically making sure that you're going to get a high-quality asphalt.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and talking to the guys, the salesmen, they said that most municipal and commercial roofs that are metal are like a 26-gauge roof. Like, lots of homeowners will use a 28. So I figure we'll do that for, it'll add a little expense, but we'll do that for this, this building. So that's not done, but it's, I'm working on it.
Yeah, really, thank you.
So with that, we can cross off the list. We'll do the approved bills and payroll orders in a minute. I know, I'm coming back to change, change to open meeting law.
Yeah, this is a good, good one. So the legislature made some changes. Yeah, they thought that was going to be helpful, but what they've done is separated our commissions and committees into two different sectors. One, one is called advisory, and those are bodies that do not have supervisory control or jurisdiction over legislative, quasi-judicial tax, or budgetary matters, which means that all the others that are non-advisory are the ones that actually make decisions, have either quasi-judicial or budgetary influence, legislative, meaning passing ordinances and such. I can only think of one. I think the Conservation Commission is the only one that has no such authority, but the others, even the Cemetery Commission, the Library Board, the Board of Civil Authority, the Board of Tax Amendment, the Listers to some extent, the Auditors to some extent. They are now required to record in a designated electronic location either audio or video of their meetings, which I think is going to be a real hassle for a lot of people. It is possible to have an exception, exemption, if the town can, or the committee can prove undue hardship, but the lawyer given the seminar said it's hard to claim undue hardship when everybody's phone can take, you know, recordings now.
Don't they mostly just have authority to spend against a budget approved by the town?
What?
Don't they mostly just have authority to spend against a budget approved by the town?
Their authority is somewhat limited, but they have, they are spending. I mean, they, we went to this meeting, and they talked about all these different things.
So they have all these funds created on budgets? So there's a question on, like, can I throw in a suggestion? When the whole COVID thing hit, it was, it's a hundred bucks, it's an hour. You plug it in, and it moves.
It's an hour, it's not a hundred bucks.
It's gone up.
Oh, it's a lot.
We can get cheap ones off Amazon.
Oh, you can get cheap ones, for sure.
It doesn't need to be that they can just plug it in. I'm getting concerns from different funds that they're now worried they're going to have video people, and they're going to do it.
So you did, so I sent a memo to all those different chairman of all those, and I got nothing in response. So I, I don't know, maybe they've been bothering you instead.
So we have a planning commission. As far as I'm concerned, the planning commission has no budget and is just advisory.
You know, there's only a little thing that, that gives the planning commission.
We do minutes. We do minutes.
Yeah, I know, but there's one thing where the planning commission can approve right away for a landlocked parcel. And, but, you know, I tried to ask that question in the Zoom meeting, but I didn't ask it in person. I asked it through the chat room, and they didn't really give me a good answer because they mentioned a ZBA and things like that, which are, which is different. But hopefully that little piece of the planning commission, that's really, nobody will know that. Jerome was asleep.
Skip, did you have a?
Nobody's going to watch.
Go ahead, Skip.
I was hoping to use the town's Zoom account. I tried to get on, and I accessed and addressed for an email address.
A what?
An email address. So there's an email address associated with the town's Zoom account. But we are being by.
With various like, sort of.
But of course, we, we have created.
At gmail.com.
Gmail.com. So I put in the email address and the password, and it's Zoom asking, so this is a new device, you know, I'll send, or Zoom sent the six-digit access code to the email address. No one knows who has sent it.
Who ever set it up?
Laura, Laura set it up, before she needed to do Zoom. And I have had no problem. I mean, I was the one, I was the select board chair all of our hours and meetings, et cetera, during COVID. So the address, Zoom recognizes my laptop address, email address. And there are people, John Reed has used it, and Tai Zan has used it, and didn't have problems at all. So I'm not sure what happened. It may be an issue.
And I think Laura set it up also.
Yeah. So it is a new way to log into Zoom. Zoom just released an update. Because I used to be able to just to log in.
Yeah.
And use their name and password. It was the first time it is in the town's account that I was asked for the email. So I put an email address, which is, if that, if that email address is just used for Zoom, share the Gmail address with everybody who uses the account, and then you can do it.
I wonder if Skip M can find it on Pam's computer someplace, now and then.
It might be on the assistant town clerk's computer.
But come Wednesday, are you coming to the office?
No.
No, it's not. It's just a Zoom. It's.
It's a Zoom. Danielle has incorporated out, because of where she lives. She uses her personal, incorporated.
What if she had to come drive online and I'm able to read and, yeah, reset it so we have a.
Yeah, probably could set it up for you too. But I would try to settle across on just to see what happens.
So regarding the select board, we're lucky to have publicly available recording.
We are listening.
Yeah. And Skip brought up the question of whether possibly HCTV might have some proprietary interest. But I talked with Jim.
Kelty.
Yeah, Kelty today, and he, he said he had never heard that.
Well, I think I sent you an example of how.
Yes, right.
Going to the town webpage. The only concern was, you know, was it going to be a copyrighted infringement.
Right.
If I can't put it on their site, I'm posting it on our site.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he didn't seem to think that would be a problem. He was looking at the Hardwick Select Board site, and they just have a link right to the HCTV site for people who want to look at the wonderful videos.
So how does that solve for all of the other committees?
Yeah, no. That's not going to help the other.
And you're recording on a machine or leading on a phone, you know, surely you'll have a recording of it, but it would be pretty excruciating to try that.
So a thousand dollars for an owl that all, all the committees can use? Why is that such a?
Well, we have, we have a whole remote.
But nobody wants to learn how to do it. They want to, putting it all on one person isn't going to happen here.
Right. It's very, it's simple. It's really simple.
What's simple?
The owl.
Running the owl.
The owl? Yeah. Okay. No, I think, I thought you said a hundred dollars, and now you said a thousand dollars.
The one I live on, Amazon.
You can find the cheap ones that.
Yeah.
I wonder, like, what the sound quality would be, you know, with the cheap ones?
If you're 18 feet from it, it's really fine. So an owl, a little table in the middle of this room would solve your problem. And I would invest in some name tags, so when the owl turns to look at you, people know that, you know, I look at yours to try to write up your swipe order, and I don't know what to say, but still, Robyn posts them or whoever posts them in it. I can't even write in it in front of it.
You think a cheaper version of the owl would also have the 18-foot radius? I guess it would probably be case by case, right?
I think somebody's going to have to volunteer to learn the ropes and teach these different board chairs how to do it.
That's the Zoom, you mean?
To do the recording for their meetings.
I think that's a lot, because especially when there's turnover with the chairs.
What?
Especially when there's turnover, you know what I mean?
I know.
A person may not remain.
I know. That's why I thought this was alarming, basically.
Yes.
Hmm?
My opinion is that this whole thing is ridiculous.
It's what?
It's ridiculous.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I agree.
I mean, for a small town.
I agree.
To expect.
That's why I wouldn't worry about that planning commission thing, because.
But maybe we should just have some, you know, iPhones are ubiquitous. Maybe we should just have somebody turn on their iPhone and tell me it's recorded, and if you want to try to get the information from it, go ahead.
Can we put covers like that?
Well, it has to be posted.
There's three people talking.
It's, it has to be posted for 30 days after the minutes are posted. So, yeah.
And it could be an audio recording.
Yeah.
You can set it to audio recording or post it online.
Yeah. That seems like the most viable solution.
That's had a digital recorder, audio recorder. So I have it, because it was never really getting used.
I never really figured it out.
That is available, and you have to learn how to use it, but it's not any harder than using a.
But maybe some simple written instruction.
Yeah, and it has a cane with simple written instructions. Instead of having to go, went to a website and download the.
So we just need to communicate, basically, to the different boards and.
The cemetery is waiting on your decision of what's going to happen, because they can't plan their cemetery commission, because it's not, they don't have anything to record with.
Well, so they, they want the select board to decide how they can do it?
But having something that's neutral, like an owl, that all the committees can use? Would that be recorded at Michael's desk?
Yeah, I would just, if I had to record the owl, like the CDFC has an owl, and, you know, the remote meetings, it's used, it's, it doesn't always work. And they got a good one, and they spent money on it. And it's really weird. People, you know, the whole room would be here, and everybody would be a little ant-sized thing. Whoever speaks up, it's supposed to focus on them, so you can see them a little bit bigger. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. But it would satisfy, and people would have to learn how to use it. You've got to have it hooked up to a computer, et cetera.
So, Michael, do you?
Just don't plunk it on a table and have it work, so.
Do you mind bringing that back, that recorder to the town hall and then?
We don't need it.
We don't need it, but, but then it's, it's there and available for all of the, the boards to use, to, to audio, audio record their, their meetings.
Already people are asking for help on, they're being trained how to use it, and I'm not qualified to do that, so I'm suggesting maybe somebody else.
Instructions with the.
They'll figure it out for you.
How easy is it on a scale of one to 10?
Do you ever have a cassette recorder?
You literally push a button.
It's, well, yeah, it's basically push buttons.
Okay. I think that seems like a good option. We already have it. We don't have to buy something. Sounds easy.
The catch is that somebody is going to have to download the recordings into the website.
And if we just had one, I mean, this has already happened with this rig. Who has it? Who had it last? Where does it get stored? You know, for people who can do it with a phone, I mean, like, next week there'll be a zoning board hearing. I'm sure Skip can figure out how to record it on his.
Skip, I'm assuming can figure out.
Right. But he's not going to train everybody else.
He's an IT expert, so.
But somebody else, I don't know if the cemetery commission has anyone, or if, who else did I say? The board of civil authority, they won't need anything for a while. The library board. Now, Steve is interested in learning some of this stuff, so.
Would it be easier to upload, sorry, would it be easier to upload it from a phone than it would be from the device that?
I have no idea. I don't have an iPhone. I have a cell phone, so I don't know how easy it is to uploading that. Never.
Skip can answer that.
Can I, can I just?
From the recorder that we have, I just used it to do the old-fashioned, write the notice thing.
Can I suggest that I think it's crazy that we have to solve the problem for each individual board? Like, I feel like this is the law. Each individual board needs to figure out how to get their, their audio recording, their video recording, whatever it is. Cemetery commission is required to do it. They got to do it. And whether they want to choose to do it with a phone, or whether they choose to do it with Michael's audio recording.
Well, it's the town. I will give it to the town clerk, and she can oversee who has it and sign it out.
But we're never going to solve it for everybody. And so every committee and commission needs to figure it out on their own.
That's why I sent them all a heads-up memo, what was coming.
Does everybody agree with that?
I do. I will first point out that that's how I feel about the animal ordinance, that every individual should solve it on their.
Take care of it. So, so I guess we'll approve bills and payroll orders. And Diana, we're going to do that after executive session?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sorry?
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Of course.
Whoever fixed the water tub, I'd like to thank them. We've had a lot of calls that got in the office, thanking us for having it get fixed. I don't know who fixed it.
It was Dana's fault, right?
Nope.
It wasn't?
Dana was out of town. Ian, do you have any more of the signs at the stadium that about that water tub?
Yes.
Because the signs that we had down there are gone.
They were gone last year. So it's not, it's, 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 we have one more.
Okay.
Change it to the end, because first of all, they have to really come here and look at things.
And then we had a complaint from a resident about another resident's property that they have left the area, left all of their garbage there, the animals have gotten into it, and it's all over everywhere. And he would like, select board slash health department, take a look at it.
So are you talking about something I should have heard?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
It's your fault.
What?
It's your fault.
We have another health, the, 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 we need to go look at.
On Eric's coat?
No, another one.
Another one? Oh, interesting. Okay.
That has abandoned the property.
We can talk about that during our executive session if you want to stay for that for, which would be the second one. But let's just.
So we need a.
Make a motion that we enter, to leave this part of the meeting and enter into executive session.
For.
For, you really want me to read on this?
I think we have to.
1B S A 313 A 1B employee agreements.
Yeah, you can just write, do the employee.
Okay. And one possible litigation, appointment of a public officer. We probably don't need to do that one, because we already appointed the dog officer. And public safety, we're going to have an opportunity to talk about what, what Lizzy already talked about.
Great. Thanks, guys. We'll see you. All right.
So you can go too, executive session.
You, you.
Huh?
I heard.
Oh, I made a motion.
Yeah.
Second.
Hi.
Okay.
Before, is there going to be a chance to ask if there are any questions before you actually approve the motion?
Sure.
Do you expect, do you expect to take any action exiting those executive sessions?
I think the only.
We always do.
I think the only one would have been the appointment of a public officer, but we did that as.
We made a motion.
No, sir. No. Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerome.